Okay, should be good.
I will start the meeting for January ninth, start off with Happy New Year, I guess. So, start off with members present, start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Since it's a new year, we have to start off with reorganization of the council. Any discussions?
I would like to nominate Les McFarland to be president.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We've always had a vice president, so I guess I nominate you, Terry.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next would be appointment of our town attorney, Alex Hoover. Discussion?
I have none, I would like to make a motion that we retain Alex as our town attorney.
Have a motion on the floor to attain Alex?
I'll second.
All motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thanks guys.
Appointment of Chief Martin as police chief.
Don't we have to do council minutes?
We can come back to that.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. I'll come back and do that after the reorganization. Appointment of the chief of police, Bill Martin.
I would like to make a motion that we retain Chief Martin as our chief of police.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next would be appointment Roger Terry, public works superintendent.
I make a motion, we retain Roger Terry.
Have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So then we'll go back to approval of minutes for December 12th of 2020, do we have any corrections or approval of that?
I make a motion now?
Yeah.
Pass December's minutes?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We may just sign them as acting president.
Then, I think this was business that carried over from last year was solar panels. Do you want to talk about that, Suzie?
We met last night, the plan commission, and because previously the first draft for the solar panels, you all felt that it needed to be a little more detailed, so the plan commission and I worked on improving it, being more detailed with what the town wants, to keep everything aligned with the 2030 comprehensive plan, and also just being able to move into all the solar panels that will eventually, they're just growing in popularity. I did submit, the plan commission voted four to zero to go ahead and submit what I think I gave all of you, to Alex, to make sure that everything was legal and whatever things that we have to do.
Did you, and I know I brought it before, and I got, I scanned this Suzie, I apologize, I didn't get completely into it. Are we also taking into consideration the two mile zones?
We added in the suburban district with the two mile.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thank you.
There are several.
It's broken up in different.
Yeah, I saw it in here somewhere, but, yeah, thank you for that.
Jonah, you were involved in that, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think they didn't, you know, I was involved up to this final. They actually took this and finalized it. I think Suzie and the plan commission did an excellent job in relaying it back out, getting in more detail involved, and I've looked over it a couple of times, I actually made a couple of suggestions after the first draft was sent out, and it's now in Alex's hands, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just got this morning from Suzie, so I have not looked into great details in the middle, but I can certainly do that within the next couple of days and give you a report. I guess it probably makes sense for me to do that before you guys vote on it.
Yeah, good.
So, just I'll put on your table it until next month, pending review of Alex looking at it. So moving on to new business, Heather Chup's contract? Is there any changes made today?
No, no changes, same as before, just renewal of her contract to take care of the custodial services for the matcha center, the park, pavilion, restrooms, and the town hall.
Any motions on the table for the renewal of her contract?
I will make the motion to renew Heather's contract for the town maintenance of the parks and the matcha center and the restrooms and the pavilion and.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Covered everything, right?
The Bourbon Fire Department contract?
And the annual contract with the fire department, the department reviewed that here, what, a week ago, Chad? So basically, it's the same as it was in 2023. The compensation is the same, obligation of volunteers, all of that is the same moving into 2024.
If nothing has changed, I would make a motion to accept that contract.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries to accept the contract. Thanks Chad.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do for our communities.
Next, we have two resignations for the BZA would be Anna Gilzinger and Jonah. Any motions to accept that, those two resignations?
I make the motion that we accept the resignations of both Anna and Jonah.
And I'll second that since that's you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, and I just want to say I appreciate you guys, I mean, I know that's a lot of money that you guys do, but I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that, because it's really important and needed.
I really enjoyed it, the time that I was on, so, and I get to continue to be part of it.
Yeah. So we're moving on to employee liaison appointments between departments and the town council, we've done that in the years past. So, any discussion on that?
No, other than I don't, during our work session when we kind of bounced it around, we didn't discuss the fire department.
Yeah.
So.
Do you want to do that one, part of that, part of the department?
I can do that, you alright with that Chad?
What?
I'd be your liaison through the town for the fire department.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, well, we talked about in the work session, I would be the police department since I have that there, and then Terry would be with you.
Yeah.
And then Jonah is going to do the boards, and then the fire department. So, any discussion with that, with the department head?
No, I'm good with that.
So, going once, going twice?
Bill's got an argument.
We need a motion on that? I don't think we do.
I don't think we need a motion for that, no?
And the, do you want, the thought process of this?
Yeah, sure.
The thought process is just to continue on and this be the same thing for the next four years, it's to actually, whether it's six months or yearly, we'll rotate, that way we get familiar with all the departments.
Also, just for knowledge, since the department heads can carry it back, we plan on having a employee work session, I forget what day that is.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, at three o'clock PM. So all employees can come here and have a roundtable discussion and get everybody on the same page.
Keep the communication going.
Yep.
What was the time again?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
I'll remind you.
Moving on to appointment of EMA advisory board.
Yeah, so I was contacted, I can't remember the poor gentleman's name, that's awful of me, who is on the EMA board, but needs an appointment from the town to serve on the EMA board, and, oh, here it is, Jack, Jack Garner, director of the EMA, and would like one of you to sit on the EMA advisory board. He just asked that we would have somebody that could pretty well make those appointments, because a lot of times their board does not have a quorum to be able to handle, or to continue for their meeting dates, so, four meetings a year.
I can do it, I'm over there.
Okay, I'll make a motion that you take that position.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Be careful what you say.
Yeah. Next would be appointment to one Marshall County?
I think we should just table that one for a moment. There's just some rumblings, I guess, on that, so.
We're not even.
I'm going to ask that we table that one.
We haven't decided to, whether we're contributing to that, so I guess we need.
Well, they've not even asked, but, yeah, there's some, I think there's some drama going on that they are not wanting to be one Marshall County. They are not really kind of wanting to have representation from all the towns in Marshall County, so I would ask that that get tabled until, I think there's going to be some issues at a commissioners meeting or something coming up with that, so.
Is that something that one of us ought to reach out to, a director?
I couldn't even tell you who the director was of that, I have no idea who's even on it.
I don't think it has, they're just establishing it.
Yeah, probably Bill Davis would be the person to reach out to.
Yeah. I can get ahold of him, talk to him.
Okay.
Next to appointments of redevelopment commission, as far as I know, they're all wanting to stay on the same, so.
You're going to reappoint all of the current ones?
Yeah.
And that is Jason Lemler.
Athena.
Uh huh. Firestone.
Firestone, and then the only one that we don't have is a non-voting member for the school board.
What about, isn't Robert Goodman on there too, or not?
They were supposed to get back with us last year, but they never did, the school.
No, but I mean, isn't Bobby Goodman on that group?
Yeah, Bobby Goodman's on there, and then me.
So you're still awaiting one mem, a non-voting member?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need some.
So this is your, you guys probably haven't met for officers, right?
No, we was kind of waiting until after this meeting.
Alright, 2024, perfect.
So there'd be, I guess, a motion on the table to retain those?
I make a motion to retain the current, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointments to plan commission.
I don't know, does Suzie have anything there?
I've been working on the recommendation list, one is Anna would like to fill the position for the citizen on there.
Well, let's start off with that, motion to put Anna on there?
I make a motion to add Anna.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
And then also on the paper that I gave you that's got all the highlighting, number three, we need another town employee to start to get to where we're supposed to be, as far as the state of Indiana. Carl Amstead said that he would be willing to become a member. And then at the bottom, number seven, I don't want to say names, because I haven't spoke with them and neither of you, so there are some recommendations for the, we need one more two-mile person on the plan commission, so that we have two, currently we have Malia Hoffer, and then there is another name. And then in the BZA, we also have several more that I've added in from last night, talking to the BZA, trying to figure out who can fill some gaps.
Is Malia going to fill the two-mile on that one?
On the BZA, I did speak with her, and she said she was willing to be a part of the two-mile for the BZA also.
Okay.
We'll start with the plan commission, do we have a, for Carl Amston?
And then you got the TRC?
Yeah.
Yes, the TRC just needs two people actually from the plan commission to be there, and I was kind of hoping and believing that Anna would be a part of the TRC.
You would accept that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, you want to go back up top?
Yeah, start with the motion for Carl Amston.
I will make a motion to put Carl Amston on the plan commission committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He passes for that, BZA?
I make a motion for Malia Hoffer.
Second?
Second then.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Malia is passed.
Actually, I should have abstained, but that's okay.
And then the TRC?
Make a motion to.
Attain all of them.
Attain all of those with the adding in of Anna Gilzinger.
Second.
There's one more thing, gentlemen, on the BZA, I've been trying to get us all like completely the way we're supposed to be, I've been working with Alex and Ty about it. Spencer Stanley said that he joined in 2015, and every four years, he's been reappointed, so if you could reappoint him to that, if that's what you choose, he needs to be reappointed. Everybody else's years seem to be within four years, so currently, everybody else is okay, but Spencer.
On the BZA?
On the BZA.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we retain Spencer Stanley.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that for both of them? Okay. Next would be appointment to Marshall County Economic Development, Greg, you've done that, so.
So, as you know, Tim Harmon was your appointment, and when he stepped aside, his business of, we didn't realize for long as time, he wasn't an actual Marshall County resident. He could be on our board as an owner of a business in Marshall County, but when he stepped away, we had to find somebody else, and I would ask that you consider Patty Kitch, she's a volunteer to fill that position, and we look forward to having her on our board.
Have a motion to have Patty Kitch on the appointment for Marshall County Economic Development?
I'll make a motion.
Um, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks Greg.
Well, thank you.
You.
Moving on to a discussion that I guess continues for the last few years, just keeps growing, I guess, is parking in the downtown or general business zone.
I will not mind speaking up. There is an ordinance on the books already about rental properties having to provide two and a half parking spaces for an apartment. We currently have several vehicles parking downtown that are not off the street and are taking up public parking, particularly for Suzie's business and uptown here. The apartment next to myself, I can attest that it is a problem. In fact, the car down there that you tagged the last council meeting, got moved the next day, and they moved it back over where the other car was, and moved one back over there now where it's been sitting, and the car has flat tires again. So I think it's time that we get that addressed. There's interest in other apartments in the lower levels of some of these buildings, and I think that that needs to be a controlled situation, that's my opinion. Secondly, I would like to address the issue of creating an ordinance or revisiting the ordinance we have on the books for overnight parking in the downtown. I know, speaking and working with Roger in snow plowing, it's impossible to plow the snow. I would also like to recommend that go from, I'm talking off the store, from Bourbon Street to Harris Street, and from Parks, or Quad Street to Park Street. I would like to take in the other two blocks on Center Street. There's vehicles parked there, constantly parked there, and.
If you only do like one block, north, south, east, and west, they're just going to move it down the block and park. You know, if you're just going to do the first block.
Yeah, no, I agree.
They'll just move to another spot in the same, yeah.
But I think there needs to be this revisiting of the rental property issue, because it's only growing.
Well, it's coming from planning, and I'm just going to be honest, there's really no teeth in that ordinance. So, we either need to put teeth in the ordinance, or we need to come up with an alternative that. I also was, you know, I know you'd brought that up last month's meeting, and I had thought about it. What do we, what's our rules and regulations for apartments in downtown, do they all have to have a water meter?
Do they all have a water meter?
Do they all have to have a water?
Separate apartments each have a, no, they do not.
Well, that nips out.
However, by ordinance, the ones that have one meter that services all four of them, they are charged the base rate on four apartments, you see what I'm saying? So it's not just, it's not just one meter with the usage of the four apartments?
So, here's my next question, so let's say I buy the old hardware store and I put five apartments in it, how do you know how many apartments I've got?
Oh, just thinking of that.
Good point.
Can I speak to that, just from like life experience and what the research I've done on the corner building? Which I can't, before I go on this tangent, gentlemen, I want to thank you for the fact that you acknowledge that we have a parking problem down there. But the fact of, if you are, if you buy a commercial property, which is anything above four units, any, it's my understanding that any blueprints have to be drafted by an architect and sent out to Indianapolis for review, and so if that process or procedure is like followed, then I mean, all of that, I believe at some point you guys would see those plans, I would hope.
They probably have to have a state release.
Yeah, for any one day.
If they do.
But a lot of these are going duplex, which isn't, isn't follow-through on that, and that's the reason why I was asking about the water meters, because if they have to have a water meter, you need to have a permit to get the water meter for your apartment, and you need to be reminded, you need the two spots to park, so you don't get your water meter if you don't have your two parking spots. But if that's not an ordinance, or that's not what we're following, that's not going to work. The other thing I had thought of, you know, with your discussion, obviously, we've got certain parking problems in certain areas, I wouldn't say it's necessarily all of downtown. The snow removal obviously is a problem, and it's probably going to be a problem this week. And we discussed it, and it's just an idea, but what if we do in like a 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM, or no parking downtown, would that give you enough time to clean that up, or?
One to six, or one to five is fine, that would be close, I mean, it would be okay, it'd be better.
What time's the restaurant open, because I don't remember?
I think it's six o'clock, is it?
I'm not sure.
On Center Street, or at the tavern?
Either one.
I think the one's six o'clock, and the other one's probably around seven or eight, so, I mean, we'll use six o'clock as an example.
But, with that, there'd have to be some kind of structure set and officer discretion given for that. Such as, you know, obviously, we don't want to black and white everything all the time, you give them a verbal or a written ticket, and I don't know what the law states as far as towing at that point, when you've got ordinances set up that way, but we got, we got to put something to it that's, if we're going to go through this process, we're going to have to have something that sticks.
That I agree with, is there a way to modify our ordinance, Alex, to put some teeth in that?
Well, I sort of think that you can modify it, I mean, I remember when this was an issue.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah, I think that you guys had a public hearing here, and I know that there were a lot of very strong opinions about it, I mean, I think, I think to be on the safe side, you're probably not going to have to do that again if you want to pass something.
I mean, completely rewrite the ordinance?
I mean, I think, yeah, you're going to want, and try to make that like a public type hearing. I think that'd be the safest route to go, if you're going to do that. I mean, yes, you can modify it.
But will it be strong enough, is I guess what I'm saying?
And I guess I, you know, to Jonah's point about towing, you know, I think, you get into trouble pretty fast with that, because, you know, I think you almost have to consider the vehicle abandoned in order to start towing it, and as Bill can probably tell you, that's, you're going to have a lot of angry people if you start towing vehicles around. So can it be done, yes. I leave it to you guys if you think that's prudent or not, if that's your decision to make.
I just, my concern is, like this one down there, moving one vehicle to take place of another, and then he's got the same problem with the flat tires again, on Main Street. The state came through today and they have to plow all around him, and it's a rental property. He's got one upstairs. And the other thing is, you know, Suzie's got a business down there, that's two parking places away from her business. It doesn't affect me that way, but for Suzie, I think that's, that's an issue. The restaurant guy on the corner, that blue truck's been there how long? Long time, it's ridiculous, it shouldn't be allowed to be there that long. And I know there was a scuttlebutt between the two of them, but that's not the town's problem.
We need to get something, and we need to make the public very aware, because there's more apartments wanting to go in also.
That's right.
And whatever that is, we need to make them very aware, and I don't know if that's a social announcement, social media announcement, I don't know if that's a letter, I don't, whatever, whatever we come up with, I think, first of all, because obviously, this is going to go, this is going to draw out probably another month at least, it sounds, at minimum, we probably ought to be doing something now to make landlords aware that they need to provide that parking for their properties. Do you have any ideas for that?
So what are, I guess I'm asking, what, what are you looking at, two different ordinances? Are you looking at a downtown overnight parking ordinance? And then also a ordinance to modify the zoning ordinance that states the apartment owners have to provide off-street parking for there? So I mean, are you looking at two different things?
Well, I think there will be two different things.
Okay.
I think, you know, and I had a conversation with a couple business owners downtown, just last week about it, seeing what it would, how it would affect them, and their argument was, you know, it's not an issue. You can look down there, we got 35 parking spaces and it's empty, and we've got three, three vehicles that are a problem. My argument with them was exactly, like I said, the church sells the building, the building decides to go rentals, the corner restaurant decides to go rentals, and Harmony Press sells and decides to go rentals, and that we've got a major issue, and anybody that wants to have a business at that point, so.
Yes.
It's from here going forward, so I think we need to take time to make the right decision, not a quick decision.
Well, I agree with that, I'm just saying, we got to do something. This got out of hand way years ago.
Anna, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I just want to point out the fact that, like I said, that if there are, if an architect is brought in to like analyze an investment in our downtown, one of the things that they're going to consider down Indianapolis is going to be our parking situation, and I'd hate to see somebody willing to invest that money in our downtown for it to get denied because of that. So I just think that like, long-term, whatever, like we want our downtown to be 15, 20 years from now, which it is the heart of our town, like, I hope that there's a solution that's brought into play that we do have more parking available for events and businesses that might want to invest.
I agree with that.
Do you want to first maybe softhand it and have Alex just start off with a no parking between certain hours at night, and then present that ordinance with a public input meeting for February meeting?
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that.
You just want something drawn up saying?
About the no parking in the two blocks east and west of Main Street, and from Park, or railroad tracks which is Quad to Park.
What hours do you think?
I think one to six.
I think one AM to six is good, too.
I just, I just think for the future, that, yes, we need to look at something, but we need to make sure we look at the future, not the now.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that, Jonah. I do. I just, we, I wanna get something started.
I, I guess when I, in this thinking, how this ordinance is getting drafted, could you step to increase fines if they continue some, you know?
Les, that's already in our ordinance violations, that the first fine is twenty-five, and then if it's second, it's doubled. It goes from there. So, that's already in place in our ordinance violation.
My next question I get would be that I know in years past, we had problems with getting cars moved with snowing. If that would be a a hazard with plowing, could that, those particular vehicles be towed?
If they, I guess you're asking if it's in subjectively the person plowing, they could say danger that they can have it towed?
Yeah, you can't, you can't, they're leaving the park there and they're violation of that hours, and we have for example, we're supposed to have, what, nine to eleven inches of snow? He can't get this downtown cleared because of cars you parked there.
Alex, can you add something to that overnight parking that makes it a snow route? Also, I mean, some of the, some of the towns I know has certain snow routes.
If we do the one to six, that should clear that problem, say, Alex?
Exactly.
Cause who determines what, when it needs to be a snow route?
Right.
Well, it's over certain inches of snow. Notified or contacted during, I hate to say, a snow emergency, that they can be removed?
Cause we have a snow removal ordinance now. And I almost wonder if it makes more sense to me to modify the snow removal ordinance to add this in there about the parking in that ordinance. Since that's all we're talking about, really, I guess, but you're also was wanting it just
They want it to be year-round.
Yeah.
I can't say I was disappointed to see several of those vehicles didn't move for the Christmas tree lighting. I don't know if the rest of you noticed it or not.
I guess let me, let me play it around with that. I'll, I'll send you guys a draft and...
Yeah.
There was a bunch from downtown this morning before six, cause I, I had to leave the house early this morning, and that's what I told Roger. I counted them.
He's gonna make a draft and send it to us.
Okay, that's good.
Since there's already a snow ordinance in place, correct? No?
No.
But you were saying that there is, okay, Alex. My thought is, just through the winter, use that as more of a temporary fix until you guys can come up with something that you're interested in. I mean, if you want something done quickly, I don't know, it's just a thought.
I, I don't know that my intent was it had to be done instantly. My intent is to get this problem rectified.
Well, I think if, if Alex brings an ordinance to the meeting in February, you could pass it on the first reading, but then it would have to be advertised as a public hearing.
Correct.
Your meeting in March would be when you take your public input and vote on it at that point.
It's a start.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That's what it would have to be, uh...
I'm good with that.
I think you need to check with the hometown diner. Cause when I go by, well, five-thirty, there's people in there that are open size.
So, they might open at five.
And, and I'm gonna be honest with you, and that's where I want the discretion there, because we've got a laundry mat that's open twenty-four hours, too, and if somebody's there doing laundry, I would hope that we wouldn't.
Oh, no, I, I agree with that.
So, how would we, we're gonna have to figure out how to write that.
Well, again, it can kinda be the officer's discretion.
How about if you just wrote in the ordinance that they're visiting an open establishment during those hour, during those hours?
That could be one way.
Because, you know, I think it had gotten brought up another time. We don't want somebody making the right decision from one of our other establishments and not driving home.
Oh, yeah, exactly. I agree with that. Can you make something out of that?
As I'm thinking about it. So, one last question on that, guys. You know, our ordinance, you know, getting back to the, the landlords are required to provide those spaces. If I draw something up like this up, is that gonna make, is that a problem for our existing ordinance in any way? Are we taking away the spaces that they're required to provide, or is it?
No, it's always, it's always been, it requires based on the parcel.
But that was a zoning, it wasn't an ordinance, all right?
Yes, it was in the planning book, yes, correct.
It's part of the zoning.
It's never been an ordinance. It's just been a zoning.
Okay. Okay. I'll get something to you guys to look at.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion on that, before we move forward?
Yes, sir. Jeff.
Speaking of business now, like I say, I'm no business owner, I'm a long-time resident. I dare to find out, you know, just what's going on in town government.
Good.
But far as businesses go uptown, the old area building, does anybody know what the status of that is?
I, I don't. We've, I mean, we've talked to him over the course of last year, and it's just getting them to try to deal, deal with us, or, you know, there are some issues whether that's structurally sound. So...
Well, that was my concern, because we all know, if you leave, if you leave a property, a business, or any kind of a structure, unheated, uninhabited, things are gonna go wrong. Plan simple. Mother Nature's gonna take care of it one way or the other.
Mr. Worsham, that building does have apartments that are utilized upstairs. Downstairs, it's not utilized, but there is water and heat in that.
That was my, that was my concern.
There's apartments upstairs in that building.
I see. Well, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, the people that own it just don't wanna sell it.
It's been an ongoing issue.
Yeah.
Particularly because of the windows.
Yeah.
And I think that is...
And supposedly, the windows are setting at Plymouth Glass, just not installed, so... Yeah, it was a safety issue that was brought up previously for the glass, and supposedly, they're there, they're just have not installed them, so...
Well, how long does it take a Kentucky preacher to pull trigger on a mustard?
I have no idea.
It's a work in progress.
It has definitely been a work in progress.
Pardon the pun there, but you call one day.
Mm-hmm, I do. I walk by most every day.
How long do you drag your feet before something is done?
Thoughts on that?
But then again, that's a, that's a sticky wicket all the way around.
Yep, cause it's private property.
Exactly.
Excuse me.
But still, there's a public issue involved.
That's right. There are windows for it. It's just a matter of getting them to agree to the installment, installing them. Am I right on that? Wasn't there at some point a discussion about a lien on it, to get that done?
I think there was a discussion.
Yeah, but we didn't.
I think it just kind of fizzled out.
Did you send a letter to them last time about the safety issues, or was there one about the windows?
Who's the owner?
Um, you're in.
Mick Vickers.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'd sent a letter, um, and then this has been a while back.
Yeah.
Ward went and talked to them, and that was that. I didn't hear any more about it.
And that, yeah, and that is where they had ordered the replacement glass. Plymouth Glass said they didn't have the employees to get it installed. That's the last I have heard of all that.
Was there a cost with that, that we were aware of, to install it?
Well, I'm sure there would be.
At the time, there was. I couldn't tell you what it was now, but...
I'm sure there would be. That's where we came into the discussion, if I'm not mistaken, about a lien.
Cause I think that's, it was the windows, and I wanna say there was something about paint as well. I think they're both things.
It, it got painted. It got painted on the outside. They did do that. And the windows just have not been installed.
And I know it's not a case of just popping the windows in. There has to be construction to
There, yes, because
Do that.
the framework was rotted there, and there was some issues with that also. Lien-wise, the only way that I can put a lien on that is if their bill is not paid, and they pay their bills, so... Other than that, I have no recourse on that aspect of it, so...
I guess our course is, somebody call them and talk to them, or have Alex write them a letter for any fake building for the windows.
Is there such a thing as a building inspector for the county?
Marshall County just has a new building inspector. I could not tell you his name at the moment. He's just been appointed.
I, I would think he would have some clout because of the safety issue. But I don't know that. I'm just...
It's worth some phone calls, but...
Another objection. I don't mean to be, I don't even be aiming to, uh, hose down the hornet's nest here, but it was a question. And I do believe it needs to be addressed.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I do. Just how are we gonna do it? So, that's the issue.
I guess first, I would suggest, the first thing we need to do, it's new year.
Yeah, start it.
It's a new year. Hey, we're just wondering where we're at, what the plan is? That way we've reached out and made contact at that point.
And I think another letter would be in order.
Okay. I'll need to be reminded with the clock score and everything.
I'll send you what I've got on that.
Uh, moving on, reports from department heads. Kim Berger.
Uh, approval of claims sixty-fourty-one to sixty-one twenty-three, six hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Make a motion on the claims totaling that amount?
Second.
Second, third, fourth, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next would be approval of pay app eight.
Okay, so, geez, so many papers. Um, pay app eight from Crosby Construction, three hundred and two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay app eight.
Second.
Okay. Les, then you'll just need to sign where that little sticky is?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is, um, change order number two. This change order, um, resulted in, um, issues with the condition and the location of the existing sanitary sewer, when they were, when we were in the construction part of the new building. So, this change order, um, is one thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, change order number two, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is yours by the X, Les. Okay, also, originally, um, in our process, when we were going through, that Priority Project Resources is doing our payroll monitoring, um, and financial management, because it's labor, union, contractors, so they're asking for, um, half of their payment, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that for the contractors doing the work at the?
That's for, yeah, it's all the union paperwork, the wage.
Yep.
The wage scale, all of that, yeah. The state dictates all of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Priority Project, uh, labor standards invoice of twenty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Is it fifty or five?
Fifty.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, okay, that one doesn't need a signature on it. Um, so currently, our water plant has a Center Street address. Why? Who knows one time, but, um, so anyhow, that address has been assigned as four oh seven East Mill Street. Uh, Mill Street was a former street in Bourbon. We kinda just chose that from the area it was. And, um, I need your approval of that, so Nip's going to be happy.
I'll make a motion to make the new address for oh seven East Mill Street for the water.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries.
Okay, well, wait, I have some things that's not on there. I'm, I'm sorry. So, um, okay, so you guys have got the new fund balances for twenty-twenty-four, and the appropriations for twenty-twenty-four. Um, I do have a conflict of interest form that I need Les to sign. And that is only, that is a state requirement, and mainly only because Les works for the Sheriff's Department. Marshall County Sheriff is one of our vendors. So, Les, you will sign down here, but I need Jonah and Terry to sign here.
Do, we can sign it now, or we want to?
Yeah, you guys can. The other one is the nepotism policy, um, and I'm gonna have to have Les and Terry both sign that. That stated in twenty-twenty-three, you did not agree to hire any family members. So, here's Terry's and here's Les's. You guys also have copies of the year in transfers, um, from twenty-twenty-three. All of those transfers were made within the appropriation funds that they were in, so there, there's no issues. If you notice, a lot of them was done in the police department. So, that was kind of a crazy year for that. So, that was where those transfers were there. I do need approval of resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one, and that involved a transfer of fifty-six thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents from the general fund to the rainy day fund. Um, and that was just from excess appropriations that was in the general fund at the end of twenty-twenty-three.
A motion for that transfer?
I make a motion to transfer from the general fund to the rainy day fund in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second?
Second then.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, so, as you know, the filter on the new water plant was supposed to be set today due to the conditions of the weather and the wind. That is gonna now be moved till next Tuesday, depending on the weather. And also, um, our lead and copper survey has went out in the mail to all of the, the citizens in town. Um, so far, we've had a great response by that, um, and we've had to go and help some of the people with that, but um, that is all a new law from the Environmental Protection Agency that is, um, making the cities and towns throughout the United States being compliant, that there's no lead water lines going into houses, so um, if people question that, if they need assistance, call the office, because we'll be more than glad to come out and help with that also. So, other than that, I think that's it.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, Bill Martin?
You have my monthly and yearly report?
How's the new officers working out?
Good. We have, we're in our second head of academy, and two reserves started the academy in Casasco County today, tonight. And two reserves started the academy in Casco County today, tonight.
So we have two down at the academy now?
Three.
Three. Okay. So you're able to get them all three in the same time?
That's what the academy plan really wanted.
That's good.
I would also like, uh, to put Doug Norman and Steve Freck on our reserve department.
What was his last name?
Frank.
Frank.
Steve's already a reserve for the county, right?
Yes.
And Norman used to be a dispatcher, so he's got some.
Well, he was our, one of our reserves. Both had, both had the
Motion on the floor?
I will make a motion that will permit Bill to add Douglas Norman and Steve Freck as reserves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Phil. Uh, Roger, Terry?
Do you have the activity reports? We have several intersections with field signs. Let's document our fill and we've come to the conclusion that we should change those to stop signs. Um, I know, I don't have any intersections written down, but we need to go through a process cause there's, you know, it's a legality thing to change them, so.
You have to do an ordinance for each one.
I think amend, amend the current ordinance and then put them in place. Is that one?
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
That's what I need to do. Uh, we get, we can do that. If we can do that, that'd be great.
Uh, do you wanna bring that to next meeting?
I'll bring that to next meeting. We can have Alex.
Get, get a copy of those intersections and ordinances to him so he can maybe have that next meeting?
Uh, the next thing I know is the community crossings, so we'd like to continue that. Uh, we'd have a lot of good luck with that. It's been good for us, you know, it's, the match is better for us cause we get, we're getting a lot more done, so.
When's the next round for that?
It's due at the end of this month. That's why I'm here, so. And also wanna thank Kim for all the work she does on it too, so.
Well, if we need a motion, I make the motion. We still continue to, to that project.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
While I, while you're on the floor, right, it's minute. Okay, so we do, well, never mind. I answer my own question.
Okay.
Love those.
Thank you.
It's an old man's moment.
Suzie Shetzel?
Sorry. Um, last night we had a plan commission meeting where they reorganized, um, accepted Jonah's letter of recommendation. And they worked a lot on the solar panels that you already have for Alex. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals also met last night, reorganized them. Um, they had a public hearing in regards to adding an accessory building onto a parcel that did not have a homestead. Um, it was approved and handled and signed. And then both of us discussed possible new members to replace people and to make sure that everything was up to Indiana's purpose. But you have that written already.
Yeah, that, we already covered that, yeah.
I was told that you wanted to stay instead of just saying how much.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, we like that.
Yep.
Thank you. Chad's step.
Uh, we had seven calls since last meeting, five of them being medic assist, one accident and a disregard.
Anything else that, on the fire truck?
Yeah.
Uh, it's getting closer. There's still a few things backward, but
Okay.
How long we had that thing now? Two years? Three years?
Yeah, two.
Okay, thanks, Chad.
Did most of the time and at the green.
Thank you, Chad.
Alex?
Uh, the only open litigation I had to report right now, um, is on the Karen Holmes matter. Um, it's set for trial on March fourth. I've let Kim know. Um, she's probably the only person I need there if it gets that far. Um, her, Ms. Holmes attorney, um, wants to reach out and try to reach a settlement, so obviously if I get anything like that, I'll pass it on to you guys if, if you wanna approve it or not. That's all I got.
Um, any patron comments, citizens' comments? Thanks for coming, showing interest.
You're welcome.
So, um, council member comments?
I don't have anything, other than welcome Jonah.
Thank you, yeah. Well, I guess we'll go into a ju- uh, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's council meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.